I'm sharing with you a document for this, just the, you know, relevant data.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you Brett.
So pull that up in Google Docs.
Yep.
Are you able to share screen? Are you, you're not on?
I'm not gonna share it on the screen. I'm just gonna have it through us.
Alright, it's just coming through.
You're live.
Great. Thank you. We will call our meeting to order at whatever 6:33 PM. Any who may be watching, thankful we noticed this last minute. I'll get to that in a little bit, but let's get officially started. Ask for approval, motion to approve the agenda, one item agenda. Brian, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Mary Caitlin. There's not much to amend, but any questions, comments, amendments to the agenda? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
And Erica, you can vote because you're video, so if you'd like to vote. If I don't hear a negative, I'm gonna assume you voted yes, okay? Very good. So 6-0, we will note the absence of Marty wishing her all the best and Kevin after his surgery today. Very good. So right to the point. I'm really glad on Wednesday that, from the school's perspective, was it Wednesday or Tuesday? What day was it? Tuesday. From the school's perspective, the kids in the schools generally that overall wasn't chaotic. I admit, I felt like Tuesday was quite chaotic because of all the emails and some phone calls that happened that day that were distracting from work. In the meantime, the presentation that I've shared with the board, I'm not sure it's a presentation, but is one I think someone in the community would give it to us, and I will be candid in my speech, that it's likely that sooner or later we would get that and somebody would say this is the only thing we should ever refer to. As I've tried to point out over the years, we're an educational institution and getting information from multiple sources, varied sources and credible sources, if I can add that word, is important to us. So this is not a single source document in the least. But there's no doubt that this is a important topic, masking, that is. It's, I don't, I say important, but it's, I'm not sure what the word is, nuanced, controversial, a bunch of different words. And regardless, what happened showed somewhat a lack of, and that press on three words, I'm not trying to offend anybody who may be watching, but a lack of understanding of layers of government that exist. Because from one of my perspectives, as soon as the order, governor's order was vacated by the courts, then our own masking policy immediately took effect. Alright, and we had our own policy. So it, there wasn't a gap, not even of a second. It was an immediate transition to our own policy.
And Peter, just for clarity for people who might be watching, that's the masking policy that was enacted in August of 21, the beginning of the school year, if I'm remembering correctly?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And amended a little later, but yes.
Or yes.
It was in place 2020, correct?
Okay, amended in 2020.
Amended in 2021 when we allowed for the outdoor.
Yep, it was in further, and then we amended it for the outdoor. It is for reference, if people want that, 7515 policy, 7515. And as an elected body, we have the responsibility to create policies which is applicable to everybody who then touches school property. And that's why I say that a policy immediately took effect. It was no longer dependent on. But that being the case, I also felt like our policy is worth revisiting, at least in discussing, because there are strong opinions on either side. And, and so that's where we are. I don't know about how to go about this. My thought is, but I'm open to suggestions. Go down the row essentially, or I can start and provide some, some thoughts that are going through my mind on, on both sides. I've shared some at the board business meeting in terms of my historic situation with the son who had been at one time, you know, leukemia, high, you know, immune compromised, and we sent him to school. We did so with advice and consent, is that the right word? Of our team of doctors who were, you know, serving us at the time and treating him and having good understanding of all the things we needed to do to keep him safe. And I, and so I think about that often, that obviously that was a scary time of five years for us as a family. At the same point, you know, what have we learned? Those are some of my thoughts too. What have we learned in two years? I read one article, if you don't wanna be sharing it, it was really lengthy, 30, 40 pages, about three weeks ago, that went through a history, and that's why it was so long, of government entities and things they put in place based on some scientific information that was not entirely right at the time, but that was the best they had. Several years into a situation, and this was going back even to the 1800s, they would stick and double down to a, to that policy despite having received more updated and better information as they looked into. And it was, this whole article is about the, this history and of doubling down. And I thought, wow, that's really fascinating that we, as human beings, human nature, get stuck somewhat in our pride to say, nope, that's a decision, I'm going with it, and, and kind of then documenting the harm that came out of it because you wouldn't adapt to new information. I have to admit that weighs on me because I've said several times throughout the pandemic, for me, we don't seem to weigh anything other than the COVID. The mental health is where I would go with that, right? The social emotional impact that, that the pandemic is having. And so I, I've always been looking for something that says, at least we're trying to recognize it. Now we have the Surgeon General of the United States who's declared that a, wasn't a pandemic, what did he call it? The, the mental health crisis that we have, is it, did he call it pandemic as well? So there's another pandemic, and yet I, you know, I have to admit, sometimes I feel this made out of CDC that I don't see any recognition of that coming on. So I, I have some mixed emotions. I understand perspectives from the other side in terms of some of my, my natural tendency, but I, I am open. So anyway, I just wanna share that. Happy to start. I don't know which way. I could do seniority or whatever, but we're just, you know, I don't know who that would be, who would start first. But Joyce, you wanna lead off sometime and take a few minutes?
Well, I just have a couple of thoughts to start. To start with, just a few things. I read the Harris Beach piece that said, you know, the Board of Education has the authority to take measures to protect our schools from, you know, health and safety and all of that. So it's certainly our authority and our charge to do that. I think that things change so rapidly, and to make a decision on masking, I mean, right now, we are tied. We have to mask. I'm good with that, believe me. And I just think that we can only assess day to day as things happen, as our numbers go. I was noticing, you sent us an article about a high school that went to choice. They're back to the mandate. The end of December, they revoked it because their numbers spiked. So now they're mandating masks again. So they tried, didn't work out, and they went back. I'd rather err on the side of safety myself, but I think we just have to keep listening to the doctors. We have, you know, our initial policy, we, my goodness, we did our due diligence. We sat for how long with how many doctors and scientists and attorneys and, you know, everything. And we made our best decision, and it seems to be holding so far. Numbers aren't, we know we don't have spread in school. To me, that doesn't mean take the masks off. It means it's working. And, you know, I've used, I've said, quoted Bader Ginsburg before. It's, you don't wanna close your umbrella in the middle of a rainstorm because you're not getting wet. And I think taking the masks off would do just that. But I just think we have to keep following the science, the advice. I'm not gonna make that decision. I am not a pediatrician, researcher, any of that. I think that's who we have to follow.
I'm gonna write some questions. I'm gonna let.
Sorry, write my questions down, so one not to interrupt, and two, just to, well, not to interrupt and take it away. Just go on with seniority, if that's okay, right? So, boy, Marty's not here. That takes us to Damon, to you.
Alright. No, so, so I have just some bulleted thoughts in no particular order. And they're not strung together necessarily in a cohesive manner, but there are just top of mind thoughts about masking. Number one is personally, I don't enjoy wearing a mask. It's not something I enjoy. Like I, sitting for a long time, it's not, it's not hindering my life, it's not hurting me, but it's not something that I enjoy. And I don't enjoy subjecting anybody to wear a mask for no reason, right? So just, just to be clear about that, I, I work from home. I don't wear a mask when I'm working at home. I wear a mask when I'm in schools and do school board activities, and I generally wear it when I go shopping, right? That's, that's pretty much it. However, our school policies have to address and protect the most vulnerable of the people that are in our buildings. And everybody has a certain specific individual circumstance that I don't, I'm not aware of, but we have thousands of people in our buildings, students and staff with various circumstances that I can't be aware of. So we need policies that protect the lowest common denominator or the highest, highest denominator, however you wanna look at it, but that has to protect the most vulnerable of the people that are with us. None of us on the board are doctors, medical doctors, sorry, medical doctors. Personally, I would not take the advice of anybody on this board in terms of the efficacy of a mask or a vaccine or a booster. That's not our job, that's not our roles, that's not our profession. We're not immunologists, we're not, that's not what we do. Nobody should listen to me in terms of my opinion. And we shouldn't, nobody should, nobody in our community should be comfortable with us making a decision outside of medical guidelines. That would be alarming, quote unquote, to me, if a bunch of people that are novices made a decision based on politics, right? So we need to identify, and I think we have, and specify the health organizations that we're going to be watching and listening to. We need to have strong guidance and we have to advocate as much as we can for firm metrics around what are the conditions that we need to adapt to or, or move to in order to relax the mask mandate. And when we hit that or we're approaching that, we can make policies according to the metrics that we see and the guidance that we're getting from the medical professionals. Outside of that, everything else that comes to us, quote unquote, honestly, it's just, it's just noise. It's noise. It's somebody's opinion. And then we can pull an article out of Denmark or Germany or Texas or whatever. That's interesting. I'll read it. But I'm not gonna change my mind based on that article, right? And nobody should want me to. So just being, being clear about that. The politics that are happening in the state, and Peter, I'm glad that you really explained, we didn't miss one beat. We have a mask policy in this district. It's subject to law above us, but absent a law, it stands. We didn't, we didn't miss for one second that we had a masking policy in the schools. And again, I don't enjoy masking. I don't enjoy having a mask policy, or that's not something I like to do. But it's protecting the most vulnerable of our population in the buildings. So we have to have a policy that doesn't flip-flop back and forth with a legal decision, right? We have a court in Nassau County struck it down. We have an appellate court, put it back. We're gonna have another court that strikes it down. We cannot go back on and off, on and off. We have to have a policy that adheres to medical guidance, has firm metrics, and it's on or off depending on our decisions and the, and the information that we're getting, outside of all the other noise. So that's my thoughts. Thank you.
Okay, great. Believe it or not, Erica, that brings us to you in terms of, you know, seniority here, so. Yes? Right. Well, it, it's good for us to practice some constraints, why I say write it down, write something down, right? Alright, Mary Caitlin.
Alright, so first I, I gotta, I think we gotta thank our students, like, what a year to be growing up or growing up in our schools, and they are doing exceptional. I think we hear that every week from our administrators and teachers that our kids want to be in the building. That's their number one, so they're willing to wear their masks, they're willing to take space at lunches when they'd rather be all sitting together and chatting. They've been exceptional and we are so proud of them. I think we're all saying the same thing, that we would like to be in schools without masks eventually. To say that's false, that this board wants to keep kids' masks, for, I don't know what the reason would be, that we would do it for fun, is uninformed. Last spring, when we learned that outdoor transmissions were exceptionally low, we took the information, we talked to medical professionals, and we changed our policy so our kids could be outside without masks. The science grew and we grew. So when parents are giving us feedback, I will never discount a parent or a community member that's sharing their opinion because based on their thoughts and what their kid's going through and that they love their kid. So when you email us, we do read every email and we do take it to heart. We currently have layered mitigation strategies that are correlated with us not seeing spread in our buildings. So we are being successful in not showing that spread in our buildings. We have the vaccines and boosters. We have masks being worn by kids, and we have better ventilation systems. And all those partnered together, we are not seeing massive spread in our buildings. We're in the midst of a huge surge, and all the leaders in the medical field, so we're talking CDC, DOH, American Academy of Pediatrics, say to stay the course right now with masking. And they are who we are taking, or I'm taking the guidance from, because as Damon said, they are the medical professionals that lead in epidemiology. We will continue to advocate for those off-ramps, but I wanna stress this, this is not gonna be a middle-of-the-night decision. Like, there's not going to be a moment where guidance is gonna come out at 2:00 PM or 11:00 PM, and we as a board are going to rapidly change our policy in an instant. We are gonna be thoughtful and we are gonna be mindful, and we are gonna take that medical advice and we're gonna make a sound decision. But I don't want people to feel like there's going to be this rapid off-ramp that's going to happen on a random Tuesday. Like, we're going to be thoughtful as the science grows, as we see our transmissions decrease, as we see our hospitalizations decrease. We promise to look at it every five weeks, but we do it sooner as things change. We called this meeting tonight to have this conversation. But yeah, so I guess that's, those are all my thoughts.
Yep, okay, Brian.
So I, as the new guy still, I was not yet on the board when any of the policies were made. So I'm not privy to any of the conversations that were had. I fully support the policy, fully support the board in their actions and what they, and the conversations that they had and what they did in that time before I joined the board. So just to state that clearly. I don't have much to add beyond what everybody else has said to build on what Dr. White said. I'd like to thank our students and also thank all of our teachers, all of our staff members, all of our paraprofessionals, everyone else who's in the building and helping to make this work too. And I guess the only thing I would add to, I can't say anything any more eloquently than any of my colleagues on the board, is to, you know, we talk about student health and student transmission rate, obviously, that is our paramount course. But I do think keeping our teachers and our paraprofessionals and our other staff members who are in the building with the teachers and their health and their safety and their family situations and all of that needs to be thought of as well. I think that's, and I fully expect that we will. I don't doubt that. Just wanted to state that out loud, that, that they're a part of this conversation as well. That's about all I have on that.
Okay. I don't know if a second round is worth it. I wrote down five different things, hearing from others, which, and if you think this round, Robyn's workable for now, or if you didn't write down anything, we maybe make this faster or stop on it. I, one referenced, Joyce, you mentioned the article, and I write that school district, which is now back to masking, but they tried it. One, it was enjoyable to read in the sense there were, there were elements in terms of supporting not wearing a mask. And I noticed this the other night, right, when we mentioned our student advisor. It was great to see her face. I'm not sure I'd ever been in a situation where I saw her face, and some of the students mentioned that, and as you read that article, the news article. That was just heartwarming. We understand that. But at the same point, as you said, they tried something. It wasn't being effective for their school district. Spread occurred, and so they've gone back. But at least we, we say we understand. Two, some of these become related. Let's see if I can get these more coherent. Can't change in an instant. I think that's right. I think part of the discussion, and there is no policy change tonight, right? This is just discussions. So make sure for anybody watching, we're not here to change that policy yet. It's here to inform the policy committee to, to look at, I think, and see if there's things to consider. So these are related. If, if there's a way to make the policy more adaptive to situations. So again, we lost no daylight from the court case to when our policy took immediate effect. Our policy currently has no effect because it's now under a higher, a higher level of government. But should that change in an instant, our policy would step in. Is the policy sufficiently adaptive enough for changing? So, and people have brought this up, and it's where I agree. Are there benchmarks? What are those things that can influence it? Or which organizations we say we wanna point to? A little bit, I might interpret this wrong, Erica, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but you mentioned having faith, and it sounded like maybe there were some doubts against some of the organizations that we, we should look to, right? That we need to look to, because I do agree that we're not medical professionals. And so there, there's a question, is there a reason, should we list more than one and, and expect some, you know, congruency between them or something, or what will we do if it doesn't exist? Even early in the pandemic, I think it was the American Association for Pediatrics who did not entirely agree at first, right, with CDC. And it got to a point where they were very well aligned and have been for a long time. If that happens again, though, are we gonna weigh one over the other? And then the question, the one that, the thing in my conversations from Tuesday and talking with people and the emails and even from this one presentation, which clearly, clearly lopsided. But I, I had to go back and think about my situation again with my son in leukemia, who would have been classified as most vulnerable, is indeed I had a set of medical professionals who were advising us on how we keep him safe. And, and that likely is the case with almost any, if not all, students who are in that set of vulnerable situations, that they are likely able to take precautions because they will have advisors around them. The level of mask, right, the N, the KN95s, or not even go to school, because we know of some that who had cancer who did not go to school even when we were back part-time because the medical advisors were there. So is there a better way for us to protect the most vulnerable that doesn't necessarily include, you know, 100% across the board masking? I think those are good questions to consider. So those are my thoughts after the first round. Joyce?
I don't have too much else. I think it sounds like we're pretty much in agreement, but it just strikes me that, of course, we all dislike wearing a mask. I didn't like, I don't like needles, but I lined up three times for that shot and for lots of other shots before that, and blood tests and everything else, not because I like it, because it has to be done. And I think if we did, you know, the day, when the day comes that we can say it's a choice to wear the mask, I think some people will feel much better about that, and I think others' anxiety will be, will rise, you know, a great deal because they're going to be worried. So I just think we have to follow the CDC. We have our own pediatrician for the district who advises us. You know, we've had many people that we've spoken to, and I think that's what we do, is just continue to follow. And of course, the law's in place. While the law's in place, it's really just talk for us.
That's right, at this point, exactly.
Peter, we've been through this cycle before. In the spring, we had, you know, emergency rapid board meetings to review our masking policy in the spring as we relaxed policies around certain outdoor policies and then ultimately indoor. We relaxed it to some degree, right? And we did that based on conditions and factors and, and guidance and advice that came to us. That's what I think needs to happen again. Now, can we think about this and maybe document some metrics so that we can be a little bit more fluid? And, and because it was kind of hectic, I remember actually changing the policy, you know, within a five-hour timeframe, getting everybody together to get that done. You know, if, if, you know, life circumstances, if we were not able to get that done, it would have been a real shame. So I'm not sure if there's something we can automate in this, or we can actually put together, these are the metrics coming from these sources, and if we hit these metrics from these sources, then we'll relax the mask policy. And I'm not sure if that's wise in this, in this environment, or if that's even possible, but that's something we can think about. What I, I do, what I am concerned about though is that as we ask ourselves these questions, Peter, that you, you just talked about, you know, is there a way for us to protect the most vulnerable without masking everybody? Those are questions that we can ask, but we need the guidance from medical professionals. I'm concerned about us talking about those too much and actually coming to an answer, because again, I don't trust any answer that this group of people would come up with by ourselves, right? Based on things that we read or things that we're hearing, we have to have trusted sources for guidance, and that's what we have to go with.
Yeah, and, and we did get some feedback late in the day, so none of us have seen it, and we'll go over that next. So I won't spend any more time and interrupt and go on to Erica. But yeah, we have something from our, like, say, our school pediatrician that is on board, and we can review that next. But Erica?
I won't take a lot of time, but I was gonna essentially say the same thing as Damon, just, you know, how can we start pulling some different things together? And I think that's what we're gonna do next, so I will resubmit on that, since people can't hear me. But just, I'm gonna see what we're doing to get that in some place.
Great, thank you. Mary Caitlin?
Yeah, I think when we're talking about the, the metrics, I think Damon, you brought up a good point just then. Yes, we want them and we want some sort of goal and off-ramp. But I think we just saw with Omicron that, that stuff happened so fast with this virus that we didn't understand that, yes, we can have metrics in place and we can have a discussion and we can have goals, but we also have to understand that there might be aspects of this rapidly that we have no understanding of that might come forward with the next variant. So while we'll have the metrics and aim for that, the off-ramp, I don't know if I would wanna create a policy that said like, once we hit XYZ, we change, just because what if, you know, ABC come into play?
Well, that's a good point, Erica. And quite honestly, one of the worst things that could happen is that based on, you know, legal laws or, or metrics that change rapidly, that we flop back and forth, right? We just have to not do that. We have to be consistent and provide clarity to people. And then when we move, we need to move, but we can't flop back and forth because a metric changes by 1%. We have to have wide enough variances that we know that once we move, we're gonna be here for a while. Now, we moved in the spring, and we had to move back in the summer because Delta happened over the summer, right? And so we, we changed based on conditions, but that, you know, we had more time over the summer, obviously, to adapt.
And that gets to the only point. And that gets to the only point I was going to make on using benchmarks and data. And I think that that's obviously an important thing. But like you two are saying, I, I, I fear that, like, if a benchmark, if we fall 1/10 of a percentage point under that benchmark, well, then do we automatically flip the, does that change it to no mask? But then it goes back up by two percentage points, and it's, when it's hovering around.
Yeah.
And I think that, and, and that gets into, Peter, what you were saying, and kind of the adaptability and the implementation aspects of the policy and how, how it would react to it, how we would react to it. And, yeah, I, I agree. Go ahead, Erica, I'm sorry.
And we were doing so well.
I just have one more other thing, and I think this is a good clarifying point. So what happened on Tuesday, our policy came into place. Even with the current change in the, the law and then the stay, our policy took over immediately. That's still the case. So if, I know we're hearing that it's not going to be decided tomorrow. Our legal guidance is this is going to take a few weeks before anything is changed. But even if it did change tomorrow at some random time, I would like everybody in our district to understand, our policy then immediately takes place. So there shouldn't be a battle between anyone and an administrator and a teacher or anything, because our policy would still immediately come into place, that we are still masking in our district.
Right, okay. So if there's not, I think, well, correct me, then feel free to interrupt. Overall, Erica was mentioning finding ways, if there's ways to be flexible, right? Flexible by classroom, flexible by school, other ways. Are there, are there options out there that give us similar success ratio? Because, yes, we've had success, that don't require the, the 100% across the board. Again, moot point for now, but that's the point of discussing it while it's moot, rather than catching us at a bad time. And then we have, you know, people up in arms who don't fully understand the level of governments and, and what things stick. Let's switch a little bit, if you don't mind. We did get late in the day, things from Dr. Leonard. Anyway, some, just some information of things to consider. Again, there's, you were sent that link, right? It's barely just copied and pasted. I don't know that it's in any coherent order, but just things I thought, you know, if we want to look over that.
One thing I thought was really interesting in the information from Dr. Leonard is even when she's talking about potential future metrics for lifting the mask mandate, it again is multiple layers of mitigation. So it's never going to be, we hit one thing, and that's that. It's going to be partnership of school infection rate, community infection rate, vaccination rate. All of those things are going to come together to make it a safer environment.
That's, that's exactly right. In my conversations with her and other medical professionals, many of these mitigation strategies of relieving masks or going to some sort of flexible mask, mask environment would be about vaccination rate and infection rate. I think that's worth reiterating, and that's parallel. That's the one consistent thing that I've heard throughout the ebbs and flows of the different bits of information that we get.
So using those, because we're talking about metrics, is there room in our policy to talk about both the vaccination rate and infection rate as some level of indicators? And I'm in agreement with you, Damon, well, everybody, right, that we're, we are not in a position, not the right kind of doctors, no offense, but people who can read studies on very well and understand them.
We're, we're, we're shifting. We're good. We're moving forward, but we're, we're fixing Erica's problem.
Okay. So, okay, we're still alive and, okay, is, you know, that we need to, it's our responsibility. We do not take, we do not create our own legal advice on this team. When we are having insurance challenges, we look to our insurers for advice and guidance. And we do that with the medical as well. So we, I'm not saying that, but with their advice type thing, are there, is there room in a policy to, say, to the policy committee, consider those two as, as indicators? I don't sure what those thresholds would be, but, you know, vaccination rates, community spread rates.
I, I think there'll be information to consider. I don't know that any, there's been any large-scale agreement between medical professionals that has come out to say what those would be, like what we should be. I know we have suggested ones and ones that everybody's looking at. But I don't think we've gotten really strong guidance on what those should be.
And I don't think we, as a board, can have some kind of trigger that says, okay, the rate today or this week is such. And so that triggers doing it this way or that way. I think we have to wait until we get absolute guidance, CDC, Department of Health, Monroe County Health, Dr. Leonard. We need the people that we trust. I don't, you know, people watch the news and say, oh, my gosh, I saw, you said if it got below this percent, and that's what they said on Channel 10, so we should be able to send our kids with no mask tomorrow. I'm sending them without a mask. We can't have a trigger like that. We just have to say we will follow the guidance of the state, the county, the health departments, the CDC, the people who really understand this. Even they, as someone just said, have difference of opinions. But what they settle on, I think, is how we have, you know, we have to take their guidance.
I think trigger is the right word. And that's, you said it more eloquently than I did. But that's what, that was the point I was, I think we were all trying to make, because we don't want that automatic number in there, that one, one number falls below one number, and then all of a sudden, things happen. So.
Well, and so some of the things that have been made, and I agree with, and still, some of the thing concerned for the meeting tonight and how I felt on Tuesday, is we are volunteer board, and so hard for us to get together on a dime, even pulling this meeting together, just a little over 24 hours, right? It's, it's challenging. We don't have everybody present. We don't have everybody. Is there still ways for us to try and provide that even to administrators? Just trying to ask questions. Those are ways for our policies to serve us well as a community, as a school district, without requiring, you know, last-minute trying to get together like we've done in the past. Maybe not. Maybe this is just a situation where we have to accept that. I'm throwing out these questions. How do we get a policy that sufficiently robust, I think I'll use that word instead of flexible, sufficiently robust to provide for the safety and provide for, you know, the overall relief? Because, again, I'm going back to the thing that bothers me the most. All this time still is the other types of costs that come with it. And the other types of costs, we keep hearing from our mental health guidance in the schools, is really the behavior challenges that are being had. And that still seems to have zero weight, almost in this discussion here, but all, you know, amongst all others. And I, that seems to bother me.
Peter, you're saying behavior implication is because of masks or because of schools?
Masking, well, all around. But masks throw, throw into that, I think.
Well, I mean, I think that's worth definite discussing. I, I personally, I'm just being honest, I haven't heard about any behavior issues because of masks. I've heard of behavior issues and mental health issues because kids were at home for so long and away from their peers and connections. We definitely want to keep schools open, which is kind of another reason that we want to be more cautious in terms of stopping preventative measures that are layered. Because if we're wrong and we have to close schools, that becomes a worse alternative.
Let's see if Erica's sound is working.
I can, I can cause feedback by taking off, say, talk again. I, I definitely can understand that that would be a, a real factor that we, you know,
We can hear you. Do you hear us?
if, if we can address that for younger children. I mean, there are kids at all ages that have different circumstances, right, that we need to be aware of and adapt to the best we can while, you know, having policies for the, you know, for, for, you know, everybody. We have to be adaptable to individual circumstances. We have been always around different, different needs of the children. And so being aware and being close is something that we have to keep on being. And I would encourage Brett and our administration that if there's things that we need to do for a particular child because they're struggling with a mask and they, and they're reading, or whatever the circumstance is, that we try our best to make accommodations for that child. I'd just like to repeat a little bit. I think, Erica, you're still not coming through. And, and so just, she was giving more specific examples, especially in the, the younger grades, how important facial cues are, seeing lips when you're learning at the K12, I don't know, all, all the way through school, because our society's based on, I mean, a lot of communication's based on facial cues. But regardless, at the youngest of ages, when they are learning those things, that is some of the challenge. And what I'd say, the cost of masking, right, that we're likely to pay for in different ways. And we have allocated resources because of that. But it's one of those things that can, you know, allocated resources to try and recover from those costs are different than trying to just take it away, take away the, the barrier that's there. Now, that comes at a cost too, right? We're talking about COVID. So it's, it's not like one's perfect over the other.
I think we do have to, again, though, follow the advice, the research. We can't base it on anecdotal evidence and worries. I know it's happening. We, we've seen it. I work with young children. And, but we need to weigh, well, we don't need to. We need to listen to those who weigh all of these together. Because, again, we are not equipped to make this decision. And earlier in the week, I was concerned that decisions, not necessarily by us, because we have our policy, but that decisions would be made by a judge. That judge is not a medical person and actually didn't have any problem with masking. It was a procedural decision only. That's really no way to change a health and safety policy because a procedural issue was pointed out by a judge. So, I, I mean, I am just, and I think we all are, we're going to listen to our doctors. We need to follow the medical advice, the research, the data. And, you know, I'm not equipped to make those decisions looking at the numbers. I have to listen to those who are.
So what, what do we do? And I, I appreciate all of these reflections. I'm, I'm learning a lot and appreciate your perspectives. What do we do, absence guidance, though? What do we do when we get to a point where we have medical professionals or networks sort of saying, well, it's up to each local circumstance?
Do, sorry.
Do you really anticipate that's going to happen? They're going to throw up their hands and say, you guys decide for yourself?
I, I, you know, again, I foresee a direction and a time coming based upon feedback that I'm getting because of the lack of commitments by our, our local entities to be able to commit to, you know, a standard for many different reasons, that it's going to be put on local boards or local school districts and local circumstances.
I think we go back to the people we trust. We talk with Dr. Leonard. We talk to, we have a lot of doctors at the U of R, lots of pediatricians, researchers. We can talk to those people. The CDC will always have guidance. And I think that's where we look. And I, we just cannot make those decisions.
So correct.
On the policy committee, that is, we talk to lawyers for the legal things. We, you know, we have to talk to doctors for the medical pieces.
If, if, if I may, the, looking at the policy itself, and, and I, maybe this is a bigger conversation or, or taking it in a different way, and we don't have to do that. But the, the, the start of the policy is in accordance with guidance issued by the DOH, Monroe County Department of Health, CDC, New York State Department. For person instruction, the district is on and on. I don't see any conversation that we've been having today that necessarily needs a change to the language of the policy. Because what I'm hea, what I'm hearing, and I'm not on the policy committee, so feel free, and we can debate that, is we all still want to follow that guidance. And I think that that's right. I think what may be useful, and Mary-Kaitlin and Damon, you've, you've used the great word of off-ramp. And I think that, that may be where we can have a little conversation, if this is the proper form, and again, apologize if it's not, for what, to let people know what are the, what, what, what does an off-ramp look like? Because now, just speaking, you know, very extemporaneously, obviously, but, you know, we know we've had a spike with Omicron. We've had this variant. You can see numbers very much going down, but they are still very high. According to today's numbers, we're still in significant or heavy transmission rates in Monroe County and throughout the state. And so that would, that is still under CDC recommendations for masking in schools when you are, when you are at that. And I think maybe we start having a conversation so people can, can know, what are the, the, Dr. Leonard has some notes in there. What is she looking at? What are we looking at as, okay, now we're getting close to that off-ramp? What does that off-ramp look like as opposed to this hypothetical future where we don't have a mask requirement? I think we still follow the guidance, but I think getting a better idea of what that, what that exit sign looks like. I'm using too many metaphors, I'm sorry. But, you know, you-
We do have the CDC zones, and, you know, until those get updated, you know, those are, those are the quadrants or the parameters that, you know, we've been talking about, you know, with Dr. Mendoza outside of, you know, our weekly meetings, you know, you know, those are the only, you know, consistent metrics that we have. And those were good a year ago. I don't know how, how relevant they are today, but those do speak to the transmission rates of low, moderate, substantial, and high.
Thank you.
To your point.
Yes. Dr. Leonard also had a recommendation in her document about vaccination rate of our students and staff as a metric, something that we should be looking at. Now, I'm not, that's, I like that metric, actually, but I'm not sure how, how possible it is for us to really have an accurate metric of how many students and staff are-
So I just shared a document with you, if you scroll all the way to the bottom, and I just added it on.
All right.
You know, and I shared it with you earlier, too. It's the last, it's the last.
I, I do think it is important, and I said this in my opening thoughts, but I do think it's important that teachers and staff be talked to and taken into consideration on this as well. Whether we, you know, the, the children's needs are, of course, paramount. And, you know, depending on age group, as Erica was saying, there, there are certain needs on that. But, you know, to, to have a teacher potentially unmasked or even masked in front of a room full of unmasked children, I don't know, you know, each teacher's going to be different. But I do think that, that that's an important constituency that we need to think about, and our professionals, our custodial staff, our health, our, our food service workers, our bus drivers, you know, kind of everybody involved in the district, you know. And I, I'm well aware that that's on everyone's mind. I just feel it's important to say out loud.
I would also say, yes, 100%. Definitely, we have adults that have thoughts that need to be-
I do think it is important, and I said this in my opening thoughts, but I do think it is important that teachers and staff be talked to and taken into consideration on this as well, whether we, you know, the children's needs are of course paramount, and, you know, depending on age group, as Erica was saying, there are certain needs on that. But, you know, to have a teacher potentially unmasked or even masked in front of a room full of unmasked children, I don't know, you know, each teacher is going to be different, but I do think that that's an important constituency that we need to think about, and our professionals, our custodial staff, our health, our food service workers, our bus drivers, you know, kind of everybody involved in the district, you know? And I, I'm well aware that that's on everyone's mind. I just feel it's important to say out loud.
I would also say, yes, 100%. Definitely, we have adults that have thoughts that need to be developed and understood. But we also have community members as a whole, too, that I think it would be fair to reach out and ask those types of questions. Because there's children on both ends of that spectrum.
So Dr. Leonard says, she has, she's putting one of our conditions, our recommendations of condition of masking of being fully vaccinated, two shots plus the booster over a certain percentage. And the metrics at the end of the document are of people with at least one dose, not...
Yeah, that's just, again, where we are as a county.
With one dose, but not fully vaccinated.
Well, there's fully vaccinated in there with at least one dose, so.
What's that? Oh, well, yeah, but we don't know what that is, though.
And her metrics are different, is what you're saying. She's talking two plus booster.
Yeah, and then, but these charts are at least.
Those charts are, yeah.
Well, that's, that's the data we have. We don't have anything beyond that.
Same, but we can't make decisions based on this data, so what else?
We have data for six through 12th. When you throw the kindergarten through 12th grade in, that's when we don't have the complete picture. Because that, I would believe that our K through five students is significantly lower.
Yeah, yeah.
Right?
And, yeah. And it's not necessarily something that we can ask, right? I mean, it's, you can get the information voluntarily, but we can't.
We don't know the names behind this data, 100%. But, but those are our school-aged children.
It's, I mean, that's good. It's a good metric of at least one dose, right? And if it's 99% of those of at least one dose have all three doses, that's even better. But if it's 15%, then it's a, it's a problem.
Right, and just so anybody listening, her metric is, her suggestion is 80%. Vaccinated plus booster should be over 80%. So, I, I don't know where we are related to that, but that's her recommend, one of her recommendations, she has several.
I did hear one helpful phrase, and this isn't, this is just kind of an aside, but instead of using fully vaccinated, say up-to-date vaccinated because of the booster, and some people can get it, some people can't, there may be more boosters coming. So just as a, as a kind of clarifying point, up-to-date rather than fully vaccinated. I don't know, I don't think that matters to our policy debate, but I think that's an important thing to keep in mind.
So as we're looking at that list of things you said we should consider, one of them is use school infection rate. Do we know that? What does that mean? What's happening in the school, or is it just a percentage of the population? I mean, when there was contact tracing, that's not happening now. I think it was generally established that spread was not happening in schools, so is it just a percentage of our population?
So I shared that with you as well. It's, says Fairport Dashboard, it's probably. And then if you go towards the bottom, I can, I had it disaggregated from January when we started, so that's when the Omicron virus was running at its peak. And you could see, you know, we had a total of 88, 122 for secondary. And then you go to the eighth through the 14th, you could see the numbers are still up there. But over the past two weeks, you could see the numbers are declining, and that's a good thing. And we knew that that was happening, and that helped us understand that, you know, our staff absence issue was sort of getting under control. So you could see that it's going down, and that's a good thing.
Right, so, yeah, we're almost, not quite, well, about a third of what it was just two weeks ago. But is the 61 that happened this week that we know of so far, a percentage of the population? Just wanted to make sure I understood what she meant by one to 2%. I assume that's this.
These are raw num.
Infection rate.
These on the Fairport Dashboard, Brett, these are raw numbers. This was not percentage, right? That's.
Those are raw numbers.
Raw numbers, and number of cases, thank you.
Number of cases, yes.
Thank you.
So knowing what infection rate is for our schools, taking that number and doing what to it?
Dividing.
Divided by the number.
But that's a percentage of the population, is that the infection rate? That's, I guess I'm asking what the infection rate is in terms of calculation.
That would be a question for Dr. Leonard, just to make sure of what we're.
Because 61 puts us at just on over 1%, right? If we're 5,800 students strong, you know, six thousand and sixty makes.
Also, is that school infection rate per building or school infection rate per district? Again, these are just open-ended questions that we can probably get easily.
They're all moot points, I'm just curious in terms of language. So when we talk things, we know we're speaking the same thing to each other, right? Infection rate, I don't think is as a percentage of your population. But I don't know that for sure.
A percentage of our population in school, but I don't think that's the, that's.
I don't think that's the infection.
Right.
That's what I'm saying, I agree. 61, we can calculate the percentage of our population, just over 1%, but the infection rate is a different calculation.
But we do know that, in my simple mind, that the trend is going in the right direction.
Oh, yeah.
Right, and I think that's, that's where it gets into, you know, we're still in a substantial area, right? And that, nothing's changed from that, but, you know, what does it look like when it goes to low? Right, and what's our response? And I think that's where, Joyce Kostick, you would say that, hey, there should be some parameters around that relative to what our experts are saying, right? Which is what our hope and goal is, that we're gonna be able to say, when we get to low, it can be mask by choice. I just made that up, but.
You're given, assuming that there's no mask mandate at the state level, is what you're saying.
The mask mandate at the state level is supposed to be over February 1st for businesses, February 21st for schools, based upon Governor Hochul's mask mandate.
Which, yeah. I guess one of those things here I'll throw in, so I'm looking at it, we dropped from 210 the week of the first through the seventh to now 61 the week, this week. This week's not over, that's where we stand. CDC, I generally consider that, not generally, I consider that a credible organization overall. Not that they're not prone to mistakes. The challenge at the highest levels is a single mandate provides no flexibility, right? So if we are indeed so different, that's where I'm looking at. So I wrote down other questions. Which organization, is it one or is it more? Because you had listed, mentioned in our policy, there were some different ones, but some of them weren't medical organizations. CDC, is that the only one we want to rely on, or do we want to go with somebody else? Or do we want to, or is it an or, and/or? Good question for Brett, I think, for the policy committee to consider from Brett. When guidance is not there any longer, when we are there, so I agree, we will go to who? So I wrote that question down, right? Should that be in our policy? Who then is our go-to people? Obviously, someone we have hired who's on staff, and we approve that every year at our reorganization, reorganization meeting. So that, to me, that's probably an obvious one, perhaps, but is there others we want to look to? And then what, in those circumstances, what are our considerations? Or is it just whatever they have? They may be as flummoxed as we are, perhaps, I don't know, although they have access to better information or more, more quick access, I would think, through medical journals or whatever they, they subscribe to. So I just think, again, things for the policy committee to think about what can be done to make it sufficiently robust to not have us trying to do meetings within five hours or whatever it may be, you know, or 24 hours or something. Again, we have time.
And I think I speak for the board, Peter, I appreciate you getting this meeting together so that we can be ahead of the game and start these conversations and start this, this conversation, this debate, as much as it's a debate, I don't know if that's the right word, now. And I said, when we, when there is, when we have the time to really think it through and to discuss this, is it appropriate? And if it's not, you know, what are parameters or appropriateness of talking to students and teachers and staff members about their thoughts on this? As we kind of decide policy and we think about policy, and that's our role as a board, I understand that, but as, as people who are living it, the people who are, who are dealing with all of the issues, the mental health issues, the physical issues, the social emotional issues that Erica pointed out, what is the appropriateness of engaging with the community and the school and the, and the people involved with this day-to-day?
I feel really comfortable at this point because it is such, I mean, we talk to many different people on both sides of it. But if we can get more feedback and more information, and then just use that as just, what is, what is our community thinking, feeling, and wondering? I think that's just always helpful to have. Now, to what Joyce is always saying, I want to also be consistent with the medical experts that we're connecting with and basing our decisions on, and weighing that up. I do believe, you know, that there are a lot of decisions being made, and we're seeing it. The things are being played out because it's so politicized. And, I get it, but that's just the environment we're living in today.
I mean, I would be interested in knowing the comfort level of the community, of the parents, of the students, certainly, I think, you know, we want to hear that and consider it in some way. But, you know, as for when, if we reach a point where there's no guidance, I would say we have to look locally because that's really all that matters. I mean, I certainly, the CDC is the gold standard, but they're looking at the entire country. If it came down to, well, it's up to local jurisdictions, then I think we need to look to our local doctors, Dr. Lenhart, U of R. You know, we've spoken to many doctors from the U of R, you've put us in touch with lots of people, and I think we would, that would be our best bet then, is to listen to the local advice of our local trusted medical and scientific community. Research going on all around Rochester is a huge research place for vaccines, and that's why I live here. I'm here for that reason.
So I, again, I know that we don't want to come away with too many action items here, but am I hearing, I mean, you're charging me to create a survey, and then, of course, I'd run it through the board, is that what I'm hearing?
I guess I just wonder, even if we got the results, right now, we can't change anything because of state law.
Correct.
But even if we got the results and we were still in an area of high transmission and the New York State had run out, yes, I would still like to know our community and their feedback, but I, again, just like Damon said, it's the medical professionals, it's the leaders in the scientists and doctors in our community that would make the ultimate feedback call.
I think as part of a survey, you'd want to make it clear that we're doing this for multiple reasons, it will have part in our conversation, but we will always give significant weight to those who are professionals. They've studied this, right? Especially infectious disease or whatever. I had gone through my mind, concern of managing expectations, right?
Yes, so I don't, I don't know, I, again, I worry about survey fatigue because we have a lot going on, we just sent out a budget one that I would really like people's thoughts on the budget. So is there a level of survey fatigue and expectations that would come with a survey that if, you know, something happened, then we would automatically change our policy, which I don't think is the case? I think in order to manage the expectations, I would worry about that.
I guess, I guess I would see, I guess I would see, I guess when I, when I brought that up, and I defer to my more experienced board members, obviously, I was thinking much more almost, I don't want to say focus group as an example, but more informal conversations with students and teachers, you know, less, something less formal than a survey. And in that situation, we can make it, you know, very clear, we're following our scientific guidelines, our medical guidelines, that's primary, but we want to hear from you about the message, about, about your point of view and your comfort, and your collective.
The only thing about that is that there'd be no good way to collate that information, right?
Yes, I go back to, I mean, not that, I think it's important to understand, but it's not binding in any way, like, it's not, and I go back to, and I'm a very simple guy in a lot of ways. I will not change my opinion on masking without a doctor telling me we should. I just won't, I don't, and I respect people's opinions, I respect their articles they send, I respect it. It helps me understand kind of where they're at, but I am not going to change my opinion unless a doctor says it's ready to change. At that point, then we should sit and talk and say, okay, we're ready to go. But I'm not smart enough to be able to do it.
You know where I am on surveys. I don't, you know, I, I think some people fill it out five times and some people don't bother and whatever. So to me, that's not good data. I was thinking, as Brian said, maybe some kind of discussions or something. But Damon's right, we hear from people all the time, and people stop us. I get stopped in Wegmans in the library and wherever, and people want masks and people don't want, and they thank me for having masks, and they say, take it off. The end decision has to come from the scientific and medical community, period. I don't think anybody else can make that decision for us besides those people.
I guess if I ask people to give up their time to do a survey, like with the budget survey, that, that impacts a lot. Like, we really dive into that, we really look at that. If I'm asking people to give their time for a survey on masking, I'm still looking to the guidance. I, I do understand what Erica's saying, understanding teachers' perspectives and the impact it's having on learning in the classroom, I would love to know more about that. And I think we can reach out to our friends and colleagues at FEA and, you know, if, get some feedback from them, you know, how is this impacting learning? But again, I think we're all saying that we're following the science on this, and that would be where it's coming from.
Again, as this becomes more of a local conversation, information on all levels from all different standpoints, I think it's gonna be important.
And so you've thrown out a date out there, not just threw it out, it's an exact date. We don't know yet if it'll be extended, February 21st is the expiration of the emergency regs currently under which schools are operating. Again, different than the mandate that was struck down because that was made in November, and we've been under different mandates since well before November. But anyway, that being the case, the policy committee met just today, is that right, this morning? Oh, okay. I don't know if it's possible to at least take something up because the 21st is actually less than a month away as well. Will that be the day? I would, my guess, my personal guess would be unlikely that something's likely to be extended. But if that were the day where there is no higher determining authority, then our policy needs to stand. And does it have in place sufficient things to say we know who we are looking to if it's all based on local, the different things we wrote down, right? Vaccination rates or community rates, in-school rates, whatever those things are, do we understand them enough to then be able to guide ourselves through the remainder of the pandemic? Regardless, it's going to be a controversial issue to some degree. I say that, I, again, I don't know how much it is, we definitely heard by those, from those who were against masking altogether. It was a good number, but part of the survey for me would be at least an understanding of how large that is. Agreeing with what's been said, there are a lot of risks we also take as communities and communities and nations in terms of what we've done in the past that, you know, that we just accept, you know? There's a lot of things that kill youth at a much higher rate than COVID, and we've accepted that as a society. I would be interested, you know, what will people think about that as COVID consists? Because I think the general consensus is here to stay, COVID is here to stay. You know, so when is it endemic enough that we're, we accept it and that's what we live with on a daily basis? Live with, when I say that, I mean without masks, right? What's, and I don't have any answer for myself or anybody else.
Then I would almost prefer if we charged our superintendent to get together local medical professionals, either under the guidance of Dr. Mendoza or however we want to do it, if we think there's going to be a moment by the 21st where we're going to have to make this on a local decision without any state or federal guidance, that, okay, then we need some scientific metrics. We are not able to do that even on the policy committee. Like, I cannot look at even Dr. Leonard's notes here and say, oh, yeah, an infection rate of this makes sense, that we would just never be able to do that. So we would need professionals if we're gonna think it's gonna happen at the local level.
So when, I guess that's where my, that sounds great and easy, but I'm hearing, and I'm reading the tea leaves, that I don't think there's gonna be, there's gonna be a level of commitment at the local level to give that level of support.
Local being the county health department?
It might be the state, county, the county would just, you know, again, they're not in a position to mandate or to enforce, they can give their opinion, right?
I can't believe that they wouldn't be willing to give us their opinion, and we have Dr. Leonard.
They would definitely give their opinion.
We have people that we trust, and we just need to gather and consolidate the opinions and then make, make our best call. I don't think we need somebody, I mean, if there's a state mandate, there's a state mandate. We're gonna follow the state mandate because we have to. If there's no state mandate and conditions get to a place where we're in the low category, we have high vaccination rates, then, yeah, we should. then, yeah, we should come together and bring in professionals that we trust and have a discussion about where we're at. I just think that it's going to be fluid. It's going to be fluid, and it was last time when this happened in the spring. Nobody came to us and said, you should relax with mask mandate.
But we did have the, the guidelines. We did have the specific zones that were created. Now, if somebody comes back and says, hey, you continue to use those zones because those numbers are accurate, you know, that, that's, that's good stuff, right? And that gives information to, you know, talk about what we could do about releasing some of the mandate or continuing with the mandate.
So there's, even coming here tonight, again, I had received some texts, I talked to another person, knowing the meeting was going on, so called there. This, I suppose this probably sounds bad, not meant to, but the legislatures, most of the opinion legislatures aren't going to touch this, right? Where they're, I, I would consider that this group to be more brave than other legislatures because we also are dependent on votes, but we're, we're taking this head-on. And, and they won't, right? So the judge vacates, the governor's orders saying it's a legislator's job, the legislature won't take that up. And, and so we're, we're going to be forced to for our community, which is a school community. It wouldn't apply to anything off-school property. Good, I, I think we've been here long enough, right? I don't know that we need to continue, or we might repeat ourselves for the most part. I hope, well, you know, it's one of those times I might end up apologizing as I did for my cobweb comment, but I'm going to make it, because I want to make one thing clear. In terms of discussions about masks that we've had since March of 2020, maybe it wasn't quite in March when COVID hit us and schools were closed down, there's not been one single conversation, not one by this board, where there's a question of how much dollars can we get out of keeping kids masked, right? No dollars that I know of are tied to that. It has never come up. I don't know where it's coming from, but it's out there.
Be coming from, big mask?
It's sheer stupidity. I will put it candidly as possible. Believe it if you want, it's not true. This is the first time that dollars have been mentioned with masking, and I made it to point out that it was dumb. And it probably won't come up again. We do not care about those dollars. We care about the students, we care about the staff, we care about the community. That is what this discussion is based on, and that's what it will always be based on. So put it out there, whatever you want to do on social media, just because you read it doesn't make it true. That is one that's completely, complete idiocy, okay? So if I need to apologize because I offended somebody, I'll think about it. Other than that, do I have a motion for adjournment or any other comments, I guess? Last comments? Thank you, Brian. Second? Joyce? Any comments or no? All in favor? No opposed, 6-0. Thank you all for being here tonight. Appreciate it.
Good night.